I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight and everyone who's watching us at home. We'll briefly go through our agenda for this evening. First, we'll have our consent agenda, which is the minutes from the February 10th meeting. Then we'll have a final plat on Parkway Estates and a planned unit development, final plan, site plan design review for the Parkway. And that will take care of everything this evening. That being said, we'll move to the consent agenda, minutes from February 10th meeting. I would entertain discussion and/or motion. For motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Move on to the final plat for Parkway Estates. Mr. Hawley, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission. I think I might have put one too far. Hey, that looks better. Before you tonight is the request for approval of a final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO-8 plat, tract A. This particular property is located on the northwest corner of southeast Shamrock Lane and southeast Monterey Drive, consists of approximately 2.55 acres. And the zoning for this tract is single-family residential with a planned residential overlay. The final plat doesn't deviate from the previously approved PRO plan or the preliminary plat and this tract of land is intended for a swimming pool amenity as well as some open space. By way of a little history, the Parkway Estates PRO final plan was approved by the Planning Commission on January 22nd, 2007. And the preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission on August 25th, 2008. Since that time, there have been several final plats, too numerous to really go through. Although this says the eighth plat, I think we are up to the nineteenth plat for the overall development at this particular point. I'll let the staff report speak for itself. One thing I will mention is that the applicant is required to install sidewalk along southeast Monterey Lane. Let me go to the plat real quick. Monterey runs north-south roughly in this area. Whoops, right in that area, there is Monterey. And they need to install sidewalk along that frontage or post a security escrow. I have talked with the developer and I know they are in the process of posting a security escrow. As of the date of this meeting, we haven't received that escrow yet, but prior to them going to the city council, we will have had to have received that escrow. Sidewalk has been installed along Shamrock Lane, so there is no need on that. Other than that, staff does recommend approval with four conditions. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hawley?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come forward?
My name is Randy Sully. I'm developing or final plating this parcel ground for what, as Jim Hawley said, for the placement of our pool subdivision pool on the east side. The west side already has its amenity installed. And I'm working with staff on presenting them a layout of the pool area, which I presented to them last week. And we're working on final plans for it now. So if there's any questions, I'll have to answer them.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back up here for discussion on the final plat. More motions?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that in Parkway Estates, case number PF-1-14-4285 be approved with the four staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Final plat will go to the council for approval. And we'll move on to item number three, which is the PUD site plan design review for the Parkway. Mr. Hawley?
This request is for approval of the final PUD plan and site plan and design review for Phase One of the development known currently as of the Parkway. Property is located west of northeast Adams Dairy Parkway and south of northeast RD Mize, north and east of Napoleon as Napoleon kind of wraps around the property. This particular portion consists of about 9.4 acres and it is owned general business in the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district. In the staff report, you can see there's significant history on this particular property. I'll go over briefly just the more relevant and recent history. The planned unit development concept plan was considered by the Planning Commission on June 10th of 2013. It was approved by the city council on June 17th of 2013. Concept plan again is for this assisted living facility. The Appearance Review Committee reviewed this project and provided recommendations. And then finally, the preliminary plat application was approved in January of 2014 and the city council approved the final plat on January 21st. So that's, excuse me, again, they ran the preliminary and final plat concurrently, so the, on the January 13th date, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation to the city council. The applicant is proposing to do this project in two phases. What they're having approved tonight is the first phase. And within this particular phase of the development, there are approximately 108 units and that is 76 assisted living units and then 32 memory care units. The final phase of this particular project, Phase Two, will consist of an additional 40 memory units. That's somewhat dependent upon how the marketing for the memory care, the demand, I'm sorry, for the memory care units goes. There may be, they may look at that differently as they see how it sells. The parking, access, of course, for this development, and I will get a site plan up here for you. Apologize, I'm looking for a site plan that, I guess this is as good as any right here. As you can see, the access for this particular development is being taken from northeast It will have two access drives and then, of course, a circular drive that goes around the building to access various parking areas. The parking for the building currently, they're providing a total of 108, excuse me, they're providing a total of 115 parking spaces. That includes parking under, part of the parking is under the carports. That will be 35 covered spaces. And the remaining 80 spaces then is the uncovered parking that you see out here, whoops, out along Adams Dairy or, I guess, adjacent to Adams Dairy Parkway, still set back quite a bit. And then they have different parking just scattered around the site. About 108 spaces meets, or, I'm sorry, about 115 spaces meets the demand for Phase One, which requires, which requires a total of 108 parking spaces. When they add the additional 40 memory care units, we'll have to reassess the parking at that time. With that, if our parking standards were to not change, they would have to look at some alternative, either through a Schedule C, which is provided in the staff report that we're region, is a possibility, or variance is another possibility for them, or again, the code, the code may better reflect the parking requirement for this type of use. But as it stands now, they meet the phase, they meet the parking for Phase One. It's Phase Two when they'll have to address some parking issues possibly. The configuration, again, meets the current setback requirements all the way around. Sidewalk has been installed along RD Mize Road. This particular plan doesn't go up. Let's see if the one down here goes up. This, this portion of the plan has frontage along RD Mize and that sidewalk in that portion is installed. They will be required to install sidewalk along northeast Napoleon. And then they're also required to upgrade the trail along Adams Dairy Parkway. Both of those were addressed during the plating process and an escrow has been provided. Excuse me, mechanical, mechanical equipment will need to be screened. That's a code requirement, Section 407-100, screening of equipment. When we get the details on any screening, it will be necessary, of course, for them to comply. And we will, we will follow up with that through the building permit process and that's where we check to see where that mechanical equipment is and whether or not, and how it's screened. The Appearance Review Committee did recommend that the dumpster enclosure, let me go back to the other site plan, apologize for going back and forth here. Currently, the dumpster enclosure is shown in this particular area right here. The Appearance Review Commission, Committee, I'm sorry, recommended that perhaps they move that dumpster enclosure over to this side of the driveway. As we discussed this with the applicant, we really determined that the dumpster enclosure in this location probably serves both our needs better in the sense that this way, the back of the enclosure, or the good side of the enclosure, will face Adams Dairy Parkway and there will be landscaping there fairly close to screen that. Whereas if you move it over here, first off, you, you have no, you reduce the landscaping because you have all of this parking right here. And second off, you're putting the doors to the dumpster enclosure facing Adams Dairy Parkway. So although, although the Appearance Review Committee did recommend that that dumpster enclosure be relocated, the most logical place for them to relocate it would have been here because this area in here is where their staff will be coming out the door to take, take the trash. We determined that this location with adequate landscape screening probably meets the requirement of the, of the Appearance Review Committee and that their main concern was visibility. The applicant is requesting an alternative landscape plan. There we go. And as you can see, in the staff report and by the chart that's provided, they meet the minimum number of required plant units. However, the landscape area in the buffer zone that is alone Napoleon in this area, as that setback is increased and the building sits back, back here, what has happened is that some of the landscaping that is shown in this area doesn't count towards their buffer requirement because in fact it is not in the buffer, it is outside the buffer. And that really has just, is just a function of the space that is between the street right of way and the building front and the way that they would like to see that landscaping presented to the street as well as to their building. So that, that, the end result of that is that it appears that they are 63.5 plant units short in that west buffer along, along Napoleon. But in fact, in fact, that number is not indicative of the amount of landscaping that they have in that area. And overall, even with that, their, their landscaping plant units is about 62.5 plant units over what is actually required in total for the whole development. Open space also is required to be at 40% and the developer is proposing 45.3%. On page 10 of 13, we provided the Appearance Review comments and I wanted to make a statement towards each of those comments. And the developer, excuse me, the architect for this development is here and can also answer questions and address some of these as well. But the first comment by the Appearance Review Committee is that the vinyl siding needed to be replaced with a more durable material because essentially this is a commercial building. What they have proposed is rather than vinyl siding, they will be using a hardy plank or a hardy board type siding, much more durable type of siding and much more suited to a commercial type of use. The Appearance Review Committee questioned what exterior insulation and finish system is, and that is an EFS system, which you see all the time on buildings throughout Blue Springs. The east and north facade of the single-story building needs to be enhanced in some fashion and the vents aren't acceptable. Let me come back up, whoops, come back up to the elevations. And we will let, again, the architect is here and I'm sure he'll want to discuss this, these with you as well. But the elevations that they were talking about would be, I believe, this elevation and this elevation. And at this scale, it's very difficult really to see the vents that they're talking about, but originally there were vents under those window areas that looked similar to what you might see in a, in a hotel or motel, particularly motels, you'll see them a lot of times underneath the window and they provide the air conditioning. So they had some concerns with that and the architect and developer have made some efforts to try to reduce that, that impact and I'll let them address that. Excuse me. Landscape plan looks fine, but they recognize that they might want to call this an alternative compliance landscape plan, which the developer has done. They requested that landscaping be added to screen the view of the carports from Napoleon and RD Mize. Again, the developer has made efforts to do that. And then their final comment really was that they liked the three-story building in the front facade and the way it's broken up and the color palette. And they suggested that they may look at ways to vary the color palette along that facade, just add interest and variation. And I'll let the architect address that as well. Couple of things of note, in the building design, under the staff portion, you will see in, in some places where it says vinyl siding, they have no vinyl siding on this building. It is all hardy plank. So where it says vinyl siding, just please replace that word with hardy plank. Staff does recommend approval with seven conditions. And with that, I will stand for any questions. And again, I know the architect is here and he has a presentation that they would like to present.
Are there any questions for Stan?
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, Mr. Hawley, how, how do you determine in a facility like that, how many parking spaces that is required?
The city code, we use, the closest thing that we have is, is an assisted living facility. And in the code, an assisted living facility requires one space per unit. It's been questioned as to whether or not that's an appropriate number of spaces for assisted living. More times than not, we hear no fewer rather than more. And it becomes even more questionable when you start adding memory care units, which we have no parking requirement for. Memory care units obviously will not include anyone who's driving other than those folks who may come to visit the folks in the memory care. So, but there won't be any cars related to that parking long-term at the site. So anyway, it's an issue that we're looking at with the UDC update, but the way that we've determined it at this point was to use the assisted living, one, one space per
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicants like to come forward and make a presentation, please?
Not actually the applicant, we're the architects representing the applicant tonight.
Close enough.
Tim Wilson with SWD Architects and I have Scott Alman with our office here representing O'Reilly Developments. And we have a few more images of the project here than what Jim has seen previously. This is the view from the southwest and Napoleon there. And you see the three-story portion of the building is the Y configuration that you see in the site plan, the floor plan versions. And then back here, I have...
Is there one on? That's the memory care portion back here. So we have basically two entrances.
Can I get you, can I get you to come over in front of the mic?
Sure.
We have two entrances to the facility. The one on the front here is more of the assisted living apartment entrance. And then as you come around on the south side, that's the memory care entrance back there. And go to the second here, this is the rendering of the memory care entrance, which faces south. And then Adams Dairy Parkway would be on further up the screen. To kind of address some of Jim's comments, first we'll talk about the mechanical equipment screening. And Jim and the rest of the staff haven't really seen how we're handling this, but what's happening, do you want to show them where the recesses are on the assisted living side? In the three-story portion, and we'll go back to an elevation and show you, but we have pockets that are built into the pitched roofs. So it looks pitched from the ground, but we actually have a space about 14 feet wide up there. And all of the condensing units for those units are actually up in that area. So we have nothing on the ground at that point to keep the appearance clean. And then as you travel to the east from the Y there, the leg going to the east, that's a single-story portion, that's the dining area and the kitchen area and fitness center for that side. And that also is designed similarly with pitched roofs, but they're also pocketed. So all the air handling equipment, the cooling equipment for the coolers and the freezers and everything would be located up in that area. So all of that equipment is off the ground and out of sight. And the only two pieces of equipment that we actually have on the ground are the transformer and the backup generator. And they're currently up here at that corner and we've got those screened with landscaping around all of that. So, and obviously staff will have comments as we submit for permit, but that's how we've addressed that concern right now with that. Let's go back, let's go back to that plan. I'll kind of explain the Phase Two that Jim was talking about and on the parking. Phase Two is where Scott's got it highlighted there and it's essentially the same plan as you see, the same footprint of the memory care plan, which has an enclosed courtyard, which allows secure pedestrian movement from that, or through that area for the residents, allows them to go outside without a fear of them wandering off. And we'll have a similar plan to that that just mirrors up into that area, but it will have eight additional rooms in it. So it goes from 32 to 40 at that side. So similar elevation details would also be a part of that. And I think on the Appearance Review comments, as Jim stated, the owner has a similar facility to this down in Springfield and they had used the vinyl siding. We've removed all that, we've gone with the hardy plank siding, which gives you more of a traditional lap appearance on, on your property. Very durable product, it's very nice looking. We also have a, quite a bit of brick and stonework on the building there. It's a faux stone that you're seeing there at those areas, but you get a nice variety in, in the appearance of materials on the building. The colors, these are kind of the colors in line with what the owner likes at this point. We haven't gone into a lot of color studies, I know that was a comment, but it's pretty safe colors right now on it is where we're at with that. And then as we travel around, let's go to the, this area here is where the comment was on the through-wall units. In the memory care side, those rooms are designed with an individual mechanical unit for each of those residents. And it gives them better control of those units for the resident. Initially, what we had, the vent was up higher, it was actually between the windows there and it was up in the siding area, so it was very obvious where that vent was. And it is kind of hard to see them here. But what we've done is we've brought those vents down into the brick area. They're painted now to look like the brick. And we've also undulated the brick up between the windows there to help give a little more variety to that elevation and give that a little more flavor to address that comment from the Appearance Review. And as we're on this side of the building, I'll go back to the site plan here, as Jim was talking about with the trash enclosure, looking at the options on that, just functionally, I think we really had it in the right spot from the beginning. There is two commercial kitchens, there's one for the memory care wing and then one for the assisted living wing. So all of that traffic comes in and out of that area back there. And it just made the most sense functionally for staff coming in and out. All the staff parking is going planned for long this area here also. So what we've done on the civil plans and landscape plans, we've actually added vermin around that and also landscaping. You see a little, just looks like a little fuzzy black area there around that, but that's all additional landscaping that we've added at that time, or since those initial comments addressed that. And while we're on the site plan, one thing that Jim said, I want to correct a little bit, we have 35 parking spaces between the wings there. Actually, only 20 of those are covered with carports, 10 on each side have carports over right there where Scott's got it highlighted. And the comment on that was visibility there. We actually added additional landscaping along the south property line there as you're coming up the Parkway to screen those structures at that point. I think, were there any other review comments, Jim, that I've not covered? We'll just kind of go through, the images we brought are the same images that we gave to staff back at the end of January here. But we would ask for your approval and the developer agrees to all the recommendations from staff on the project? If you have any other questions for us?
Do we have any questions for the architect? Okay, thank you very much. Bring it back up here for comments. Motions on the PUD and site plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Wallace?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the final PUD plan and site plan and design review, case file number PUD-S-11-13-4196, with the staff's seven recommendations.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? PUD and site plan have been approved. Thank you very much. Welcome to town. We look forward to seeing this come out of the ground. We'll bring it back up here to staff. Do we have any other news that we need to talk about this evening?
No, we do not. We do have a meeting scheduled for March 10th. There are just a few adjutant events, much like tonight, so look forward to seeing everyone then. We do have application deadline this Friday for the March 24 meeting. And so we'll let know this time next week if there is a March 24 meeting scheduled. I know Park staff will be helping clear this room out. We'll be anxious to know if they get a little bit of a head start.
That microphone doesn't work. We're, again, we've got a meeting scheduled March 10. There are a couple of agenda items. And then March 24, we'll have that application deadline this Friday. And then after that, assuming there is a meeting, I think Park staff will be waiting at the door to start opening the room. So our first meeting in April, which I believe is April 14, will be at Vesper Hall. Will not be video recorded, but will be audio recorded. Will not be live, but it'll be, we're calling it the, in a technical sense, a podcast. So it'll be on the, on the web and you can listen to these meetings instead of just watching them. That does not mean, please do not dress up. We're assuming that there may be some folks who still would be interested in attending since they won't be able to, to watch it on Channel 7 or online.
Well, we certainly welcome anybody who wants to come see us.
Always, yes. So, and again, that's temporary, but temporary being, you know, a good 18 months, 16, 18 months.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add to the comments this evening? I'd again like to remind everybody about downtown, week from Thursday is the Downtown Fundraising Gala, Hollywood Affair, Piccadilly Plaza, for the ladies. Certainly look forward to seeing everybody come downtown. Or, well, it's actually a hotel, but everybody coming to the event to help out downtown. That being said, we do have a steering committee meeting on the 10th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have the Conference Plan Steering Committee meeting just before this. There's still some food left over if you'd like to take some before you leave. But yes, we, as I mentioned, the steering committee kind of sprint to the finish line here. So we probably, right before every planning commission meeting that leads through March, mostly, certainly into April, will be steering committee meetings before, again, before each planning commission meeting. So as they get their work done. Everybody's welcome to attend, sit in. If you're not specifically assigned as a steering committee, you can certainly still attend. There's, there'll be light dinner always. And kind of hear a little bit more detail as we move ahead. But we'll, we'll keep everybody abreast as we move along. I'll look forward to having the PowerPoint presentation, just kind of essentially sharing the skeleton of the, of the conference plan. Can I walk through that tonight? We'll have that up on the conference plan website or webpage on the city's website, hopefully tomorrow. So watch for that. If it's a small enough file, we may email, just email it out to everybody so you can take a look at it. And certainly welcome any and all comments on that. The next meeting, we'll have a little bit more detail in terms of narrative with goals and targets section. But this is more of how the, as we hold, the, the front page to each, each chapter.
Thank you. There are no other comments. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.